Hey, welcome in Huntsville. Another wonderful good morning to you. Thanks for waking up with us.
What do you love about Huntsville? What makes this a great place to be?
Everyone here is very genuine and very kind and friendly. You never hesitate to speak up and say hello or good morning, or just acknowledge the person walking by.
Thing that I love most about Huntsville, I love the peace that Huntsville brings. I love the peace that it gives me.
I feel accepted and part of the town and like I belong here.
Huntsville is where my lovely wife moved when I met her. So I moved here. So I'm pretty thankful for her.
All right.
We're bucking for you in Huntsville, Texas.
Hello, I'm Billy Coffin with Sam Houston Memorial Funeral Home.
Hey, it's Gay Boning with tomorrow's promise Montessori schools.
Good morning Huntsville.
Good morning.
Hey, I'm Karen.
I'm Toy.
And I'm Denise.
And from all of us at Walker County Federal Credit Union.
Good morning Huntsville.
Look at old Rob.
Come on with it now.
Come on now.
Get on down here now and get the rest of it now.
Come on now.
Come on now.
Get on down here. Good morning, everybody.
I don't even know why we started that way.
I don't know.
It just sounded.
Just to do something different.
It just sounded good. East Texas is what it sounded like. Get on down here now. Used to have a buddy of mine. Hopefully he'll be there. You're gonna come tomorrow? You're coming tomorrow night? Did y'all RSVP?
I RSVP'd. I got the thing. She's making the potato salad.
Denise, Denise looking at me like, wait, what are we talking about?
You mean Thursday night?
Thursday.
What is today?
Today's Tuesday.
I'm a day early. See, I was checking.
Okay, that's why I was looking at you crazy.
Are you coming tomorrow? Nope.
No, I'll be there Thursday.
Wait, what are you bringing? What are you making?
You asked me to bring potato salad, really?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. I was checking to see if you were.
No, you forgot. Come on.
It's gonna be good, man. We are gonna have brisket. Hey, today, I said yesterday was the final opportunity. We decided to open up a few more seats.
Okay.
We are technically, I'll be honest with you, technically we are maxed out. But we got a few more seats. Our guest here this morning, he's invited too, to the community dinner happening Thursday night, 6:00 PM at the Sam Houston Community Room. And if you have not RSVP'd, it is now your final chance to RSVP.
Yeah, I mean, come on, Carl Criner brisket?
We are. We had 50 available. We are at, we're a little over 50, but I've extended just a few more seats. You know, you gotta stretch out the seats a little. It's like when you go to the doctor's office and they got that one regular size seat and then they got that double whammy. You know what I'm talking about? Big, I call that the big daddy seat.
That's my seat, man.
We've added, we've added a couple of big daddy seats to the dinner. And so if you would like to be there, we would love to have you come and join us for our thank you appreciation dinner. Brought to you by Hello Huntsville. We just wanted to thank the community. Thank all of you for being a part of this platform for the last year and a half. And we just wanted to say thanks. And Kyle Criner's got some briskets coming. We'll have pork butt, all the fixins. It is gonna be a time to celebrate and just, just a good time for the community to get together and maybe meet some other folks that watch the show that you haven't met before. So come on out again Thursday night at the Sam Houston Community Room at 6:00 PM. That's right next to the funeral home. And you have to RSVP though to let us know that you're coming, just so we can get a good head count. Website, hellohuntsvilltx.com/dinner. And please bring you and yours. If you've got children, bring them as well. But we probably have five or six seats remaining. So come on out and be a part of it. It's gonna be a lot of fun.
Yeah, I'm bringing the whole clan. I'm bringing mama, pop, and Aunt Doty.
She's, she's not gonna have the glasses though with the headlights.
Yeah, so Doty, if y'all don't know the story of Aunt Doty, this is about as east Texas as it gets, by the way. When you got mama, pop, and Doty, and you know, Bridgette and I got Kayden. We gotta put that little twang. Got Kayden. We got Brightland.
Gotta put the twang on it.
You gotta put that twang, but then you got, then you got Aunt Doty.
Yep.
And how many know, if you got an Aunt Doty in your family, boy, you were on cloud 19, not even nine. You went up 10 more clouds. Aunt Doty was at the Casa.
Bingo.
Christmas in July bingo. Sweetest lady. She was awesome. Denise brought her. I'm glad she did. This woman bust out these glasses that have little headlights on them. This is when you know you're a serious bingo player, right?
She is. She's a serious bingo player.
I mean, them things, it was almost like that could be the Dauber because them things were putting out so much light. If they had thermal bingo cards, she could just go like this and dot the numbers. I was, I was expecting that to happen, but it was sweet.
A little history on Aunt Doty. She was a nun for several years. Then she left the convent.
Then she found bingo and it was all downhill from there.
Oh, she found Uncle Grady. Uncle Grady is a Southern Baptist minister.
Uh oh.
So you had a, you had a Catholic nun marry a Baptist.
Where did she grow up? Was she in, was she east Texas or where did she grow up?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Southern California.
Oh, a little SoCal. I wonder if that's Bill Doggett land, you know? Bill, Bill Doggett's the SoCal. SoCal's a, it's like east Texas, but a little more extra flair, you know, some, it's a little extra flair. I'll let Bill answer that here in a minute. You're, well, you're from that area too, Jason, right?
I was born in like central northern.
What, what's the name? Where were you born, honey?
Walnut Creek.
That don't even sound California.
That's where I was born.
Well, where were you born there, boy? Well, Walnut Creek. Well, daddy grew up on Walnut. No, Walnut Creek, California.
I didn't have any control over it.
I don't even know what we're talking about this morning. Jason's about to backhand me. Were you here? Was Denise, she was sitting, she wasn't on with us last week, was she? I mean, you were just hanging out.
No, my mom was here.
Yeah.
But were you?
His mom was here.
Were you here?
No, his mom.
Can I let her know what we came up with last week?
Oh, no.
Do you know where I'm going with this?
I know exactly where you're going. I thought it was gonna be a dead subject.
Come on, Rob, you gotta share it.
If you remember.
If we were, if, yeah, I remember.
All right, if our audience remembers what happened last week, I need you to, I'm gonna need you to.
You gotta comment in Rob's made up name for me for last week.
Yes, what, what happened? What happened last week? There was something that happened on this show.
And it was right at the end. So there's very, you know.
We're gonna have some public recognition of whoever gets this, but it was something that we just on the, it just a spur of the moment.
Yeah, it just came out of his mouth.
No idea.
We're not gonna say it. I'm gonna give people time to chime in.
I was reading a little, I bought this book. I was kinda frustrated. I'm not gonna get political. I was frustrated though at Kohl's. They used to have a bunch of little Christian books and they don't have them anymore. I used to buy them for my children. I don't know, in the past six months, they're all gone. And I wanna look into this because there was all cool little Bible books and all sorts of, I used to always buy them for the kids. I met the Kohl's in Conroe and I said, what happened to all of them? And nobody could give me a straight answer. But they had a 365 bedtime stories and, you know, lullabies and all that. And I was like, all right, that's cool. So I bought it. Some of them are, you know, several pages. Some of them are just one or two little things. But there was one in there last night. I was reading about some pirate that wanted to wear slippers. And, and, and instead of robbing other ships, he wanted to go deep diving for pearls. That'll give you a hint, by the way, of what the name was. If you can put all that together, that'll give you a hint of what the, I thought of you last night when I was reading that to Grayling.
I'll bet you did.
I thought of you last night, Jason.
I have an idea.
So if you know the name, you just let us know and that's how we're gonna start the show this morning. Hey, we're rolling here. Welcome in. We are here on this terrific Tactical Tuesday, episode number 329. We are feeling fine as you're waking up today. Temps will hover in the mid 90s. First morning, I came into the studio, you know, we turned the AC off at night. Well, actually as soon as the show's over, because we leave, I go to work at the church. And normally it's like 82 when I get in here. And by the time the guests get here, it cools off a little bit. Man, this morning I got, I said, man, Paul must've turned the AC back on. He did not. It was 77 cool degrees in here this morning in the studio. So we had a little bit of a cooler night, but temps today in the mid 90s and I don't think it's, it's, it's hot.
I don't think it's gonna break anytime soon. I mean, we're in August.
It's hot, but it's not like that blistering heat we had for a couple of days. And the problem was the humidity. We were down at the coast, man. I thought I was about to just, I thought I was gonna.
You had to chew on the air a little bit just to breathe, didn't you?
Yeah, I thought it was gonna come back as a puddle. You know, I felt like my body was liquefied and I was just gonna, just kind of puddle my way back into Huntsville.
It was a good thing you didn't drink beer.
Yeah, I didn't. No, man, it was, I stayed hydrated at the, at the beach. But once you have the little awning, you know, we had a couple of 10 by 10s. It wasn't too bad, to be honest.
Yeah.
The first day on, on Friday, when I got down there Thursday, but we went to the beach Friday and it was blistering hot. Saturday was a lot cooler and the waves were really coming in and that helps out a lot. So. But yeah, it was, it was a good time and, you know, thankful to be back here on this Tuesday. As I mentioned earlier, 329 is our episode number. Big shout out to Paul Olley the Gallery.
We love you, Paul.
Yep.
Yes, we do. That magic touch pulls us through, Paul. Paul Olley the Gallery for all of your custom framing photography. I still don't know what that means. All your custom framing photography and Bill may just not even wanna be on the show. You may just go ahead and head out here in a minute. We may have to call precinct one or two here. Uh, this is, this is, I will say this in a minute when Bill comes on. He already knows what I'm gonna allude to, but there's a, there's a territorial thing that we're, that we're very protective of here downtown and I'll talk about that when Bill comes on. It's a joke that we, that we have, but big shout out to Paul Olley the Gallery for all of your custom framing, photography and more. Paul Olley the Gallery, 1201 University. Also a huge shout out to our friend as always Elliot Herzlich of Elliot's Jewelers online at elliotsjewellers.com. Appreciate all of his support and all the great things that Mr. Herzlich does here in this community. If you're looking for some new jewelry, maybe you need to get some jewelry fixed. You know what? I bet even if you had a bunch of old gold and you were wanting to make that special ring for that special somebody, I bet Elliot could do it.
Probably so.
Go by and see him. Gotta set up an appointment first online at elliotsjewellers.com. And of course, on this Tactical Tuesday, could not be here without our friends, the Thompson family, Jason and Denise Thompson. Good to see y'all this morning.
Good to be here.
Good morning.
Great to see you, buddy.
That was a nice, long intro just to welcome you in this morning.
It was.
We've had a lot of comments, but nobody, I guess the delay must be on there pretty, pretty good right now. Nobody has commented on what happened last week on the show. It had something to do with Jason. And the nickname, do you know the nickname, Denise? We came up with a nickname for Jason last week.
No, I don't know it.
I don't even know where it came from.
It wasn't, there, there was no we in it.
I thought you were part of it, Jason.
No, it just popped out of your mouth.
Well, peg leg?
No.
Did you hear that? That's brutal, man. Brother over here's in a boot, man. Had like 20 surgeries and his wife is over here saying peg leg. Golly, we may have to kick Dee off this.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
That's true love, you know? I can just say what I want.
Yeah, yeah, glove arm.
You're killing me small.
Denise, you got two more guesses.
I don't know. I don't have a clue.
It's way out there.
Yeah, well, I don't even know where it came from.
No telling.
We were doing the phone call to somebody.
I only know one, oh, that was what it was. It was joking on the phone.
You were joking on the phone, you know, acting out like you normally do.
There's only one person I've ever met in my life with this name. It's not a bad name. I know the young lady. She's very pleasant, sweet young lady. Her mom has a Mexican restaurant in Georgetown, wonderful family. But the nickname that just popped into my head for Jason was Perla. And, you know, so good morning to you, Perla.
I got you, Perla. I got you, Perla. He's the one that came out of with it, Bill.
Back, back on the show.
I mean, we're, we're, we're on a podcast. Ain't like I can slap him upside the back of the head.
How've you been this past week, Perla? I don't even know. I don't even know where that came from.
Just remember that.
Uh, speaking of which, this morning, uh, there was some difficulty out at Thompson Ranch this morning. Uh, Perla, something happened. I'm just, Jason, that's it. We'll end it right there. Uh, we'll bring it back at the end of the show. That's fine. Got a little something for you this morning. This is the Thompson Ranch.
Yes, it was.
Yes, she did. Now, I don't know his name. What's the dog's real name? Nugget?
That's basically what happened.
All right, there's a few lyrics that aren't correct. Neighbors weren't laughing because you ain't got no neighbors.
I have no neighbors.
So Jason, tell us what happened this morning. That was the theme song for you guys. What happened this morning?
So I get up this morning and we're getting ready to leave and I go out and I crank the pickup up, put my coffee in the truck, waiting on Denise and I look up and there's some cows in the front yard. So I was like, well, so I go back to go get the dog. Denise's coming out and I was like, open the door back up, call Nugget. She goes, why? I said, call Nugget. She says, why? I said, you left the gate open. She goes, son of a.
Biscuit.
Mm-hmm. And so we let Nugget out and Nugget did her job. Well, she chased the same calf through the fence three times because it wanted to come back and play.
Yeah.
So, I mean, how many cows? I didn't even know, y'all got cows out there?
Yeah.
Are they y'all's cows?
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't know.
I raised cows.
I didn't know you had cows.
Yeah, I raised cows. Where do you think my freezers get full of meat from?
Well, some of that meat needs, that meat needs to make its way over here to the studio one day is all I'm saying, man.
You know, maybe, maybe we can find you some rubber boots. You can come feed with me.
We might have to do it. So the cows are home though. The cows are home.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't going anywhere. They were just in the front yard trimming, doing the weed eating, pretty much. I mean, Denise moaned yesterday, so there wasn't a whole lot for them, but, you know, a couple of high spots, they were taking care of it for me.
When the cows came home. That's gonna be the new theme song we'll have next week. Little Pearl down there. Jason's, Jason's like, man, I'm about to, I'm about to bust you with that pure cane sugar Dr. B, man. Is that yours, Denise?
Yes, it is.
Is that good stuff?
Yeah.
It's like Dr. Pepper, right?
Yes, it's like Dr. Pepper. It's, it's on Dr. Pepper on steroids kind of thing.
I get the HEB cola. It's not bad. I'm a Coke zero type kinda guy. But I'm gonna tell you what, man, that scale needs to trickle back towards zero because I got on this morning 2:47, biggest I've ever been.
Come on, let's get back on the diet.
I need to do something, man.
Yeah, you can join me because I, I've been laying around for all these months. I got to get, I got to get this belly back off.
I had a, when I had pancreatitis, this is so east Texas. I just, I'm just.
Belly. You hear that belly?
No, no, I'm just saying, I gotta get that belly to back off. I like that, man. That's gonna be another country hit here in east Texas. Well, the old belly back off.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of how we could slide that into somebody's name. I don't know. We'll think of that though, as the show goes on. Not you, Jake, but we'll think of somebody. There's somebody out there, belly back off is gonna be their nickname, so.
I got a good idea. I'm just not gonna say it while we're live.
Oh, I do too.
That's how you, that's the subscription that you pay a hundred bucks a month for. It's called Good Morning Huntsville After Dark. And so you pay for that subscription, you get all the good stuff.
Get all the good stuff?
Get all the good stuff, man. All right, we're having fun this morning. Lot of friends joining us. Please do us a favor. Hit that like and share button so we can continue to celebrate the good here in our community. Got a great show lined up this morning. Our county commissioner, precinct three, good friend Bill Doggett of this program, been on several times and we wanted to have Bill back on to give us some updates on what's happening throughout Walker County. And also his role and involvement with Safe House. We talk a lot about nonprofits in this community and a lot of good folks that are involved in these great nonprofits and we'll get some updates on how things at Safe House are going as well. We'll continue on. By the way, I feel like giving away a gift today and all you gotta do, got a Cafe Texan gift card coming your way. And all you gotta do, Jason, what's that keyword?
S-H-S-U.
S-H-S-U. This week we had our S-H-S-U Spotlight happened yesterday. And so the keyword this week in honor of that is S-H-S-U. As all the young adults get ready to go back to school.
So make sure you text that in whenever you're not on.
Yeah, text, text that in. Cafe Texan gift card coming somebody's way today. All you gotta do is text in S-H-S-U along with your name on the zero degree.
Stole that from Rick.
Yep, Zero Degree Creations Phone and Text Line. Text that into 936-339-0139. Again, that is Zero Degree Creations Phone and Text Line, 936-339-0139. Please put your name. Because the other day I got a call from a area code of someone down in South Texas and I was like, I hope it's not somebody from my past. And praise the Lord, it wasn't because I was like, this is gonna start World War 17. And it was not. And I gave that person a hard time.
He was sweating it too.
Yeah, and I haven't, I said, I don't want, you know, there's some people in your life that come into your life for a reason and for a season. There's a season, there's a reason for the season, right? And in that season, man, it, that's a whole nother planet.
Right.
That's another planet on another season. And that's what that was. And I love people, but sometimes you just need to say adios muchachos. And that was a, you know, that was like 12 years ago.
You should've, you should've seen him out. I mean, I was sitting right here next to him and I mean, he basically broke out in a cold sweat.
And then the voice, and I was like, yeah, it is who I thought it was. And it was not. And praise the Lord for that. So please, this is a, I'm telling you, put in your name when you text us in because I will call who the randomizer picks. S-H-S-U along with your name on the Zero Degree Creations Phone and Text Line, that number 936-339-0139. As always, our Tactical Tuesdays brought to you by Guardian Defense. They are your personal safety experts here in Huntsville and throughout Walker County. Check them out online at guardiandefensellc.com. We'll talk more with Jason on the back end of the show about what's going on at Guardian and how you can come out and be involved. We'll take a break. We'll be back in a moment. Stay with us. More to come. It's your show here on Good Morning Huntsville.
This is Guardian Defense in Huntsville, Texas, a trusted, family-owned and operated gun store and range in the heart of east Texas. Guardian Defense is your one-stop destination for Texas LTC, NRA basic pistol and rifle courses, pistol refresher training, as well as a wide selection of quality firearms and ammunition. And Guardian Defense empowerment is within reach through their Texas DPS approved license to carry classes. Certified instructors will guide you through every facet of firearm safety, conflict resolution, and the pertinent legal aspects. Book now to become proficient and responsible in handling a firearm with complete confidence. For the eager learners, the fundamentals of pistol and rifle usage await discovery in their comprehensive eight-hour NRA basic courses. You're invited to connect with Guardian Defense on Facebook and Instagram or give them a call at 936-293-0364. You can also visit them online at guardiandefensellc.com. Guardian Defense, your reliable partner in mastering firearm safety and acquiring quality firearms in the heart of Texas.
Here we grow again. Tomorrow's Promise is excited to announce our third location to better serve the families of Walker County and surrounding areas. At Tomorrow's Promise, we are more than just childcare. We pride ourselves on partnering with parents and creating a place where every child is respected, loved, and nurtured in the highest quality environment. See what makes us the perfect fit for your child and their needs. Schedule a tour and learn more about Montessori.
Tomorrow's Promise Academy on Veterans Memorial now open. Visit tpmss.live for more information. Education you can trust.
The Oak Ridge Disciple House is a faith-based, 501(c)(3) nonprofit Christian character building ministry, helping men 18 and older who are suffering from drug and alcohol addictions. If you or someone you know needs help, there is light at the end of the tunnel and that light can be found through the Oak Ridge Disciple House. For more information, visit oakridedisciplehouse.com.
Welcome to Magnolia Kennel of Huntsville, where we've been caring for your furry family members for over four decades. Nestled at 877 IH45 South, our kennel is a perfect retreat for your pet. With a climate-controlled facility, spacious exercise yards, we ensure a comfortable and enjoyable stay. At Magnolia Kennel, we offer a range of options including overnight boarding, extended stay boarding, and doggy day out. But that's not all. We also provide additional pampering services like baths and male care to keep your pets looking and feeling their best. Making a reservation is a breeze at magnoliekennel.com. We take great pride in our dedication to the community, supporting our local fire departments by providing oxygen pet masks. Stay connected and enjoy adorable pet updates by following us on Facebook. Magnolia Kennel of Huntsville is where dogs get to be dogs. Visit us at magnoliekennel.com to book your pets next day. We can't wait to meet your four-legged family members.
Hi, I'm Billy Coffin, manager of Sam Houston Memorial Funeral Home. We know times of loss are tough and you need a place to feel comfortable and cared for. At Sam Houston Memorial Funeral Home, we pride ourselves on being with you during those really tough days. You can rest assured that we will be on your side and by your side every step of the way. Thank you for your trust. Sam Houston Memorial Funeral Home, supporting families every day, every step.
All right, back at it. 7:56, Jason.
It's almost your magic time.
No, I'm, I'm earlier now. I'm, I'm earlier.
Well, your favors come back at 7:57.
Yeah, I just like that 57, Heinz 57. What is, what is that? Get ready for it, Bill.
Ready? Phil's over. What did Rob do this morning?
Bill Doggett's pointing. Bill Doggett's pointing at the screen saying, what is that?
Yeah, he's got a song in there called Bill Doggett's Turf.
You know, sometimes the computer don't pronounce things correctly. So there's, there's something coming up here in a little bit called Bill Doggett's Turf.
Let's rock it. That sounds good.
Bill, welcome on, man. How you doing? Good to see you.
I'm doing well. Good and well, Rob. Thanks for having me here today.
You bet. Our precinct three commish here with us this morning and Bill, man, first and foremost, I wanted to always say thank you for your friendship. You've been a, a friend of this community and, uh, man, I appreciate you coming to the wedding. You and Deborah came and, and that meant a lot to my wife and I and Jason and his wife were there and Bill made up some comments about me. So I appreciate you, you know, taking, taking that 20 and saying nice things about me.
That is true. I did take the whole 20. You know, it's easy to say nice things about great folks and you know, you and your family have been a blessing to our community since you've been here, just raising up the positive side of what we do. And there's a whole lot of positive in Walker County, but not a lot of folks get in front of the microphone and say that, especially in today's world. It's so easy to point and be grumpy and there's not a whole lot of accountability to that. But to, to raise up your neighbor, your friends and your businesses and make the community a little bit better, that's easy to support that. That's piece of cake.
Well, we do live and, and what I like to say is the greatest, I, I took this from the mayor of Georgetown and I shouldn't have, but you know, too bad. We live in the greatest city on planet earth, right here in Huntsville, Texas. And, and I really feel like, you know, the greatest county in this area. You know, I was involved in Williamson County for many, many years and there's just something special, Bill, about this area and the people, the work ethic. It's just, it's almost like if you're out in town and somebody isn't nice to you, you're wondering like, man, they must be having a bad day. And you almost wanna help them-
Yep.
-turn that around and be nice.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. Remember our old friend Cooter Robertson, his old saying was, beautiful Huntsville, Texas, aren't you glad you live here? And absolutely true. Absolutely true. I've been here-
He, he closed his radio show for years saying that.
He did, absolutely. Yep.
Oh, I love that. Well, you know, Cooter is doing better. He has, uh, he's been a little down on his health and he is doing a lot better. I, I talked to him, uh, in fact, earlier last week and we had a good 30-minute phone call.
Awesome.
And he is doing a lot better and, uh, we're so thankful for that and we're gonna go out and go out to eat hopefully sometime this week.
That's cool.
We're gonna try to get together and go out to eat and just, I love, Cooter's one of those guys that you just wanna sit and you just wanna listen.
Yeah.
Because he has a wealth of stories and history about this community.
Absolutely does. Absolutely. And he has that, he has a voice you have, that perfect, I won't say perfect, radio voice. That makes you sound like you're ugly, you know, because it's not a TV voice, but you have a radio voice. Cooter has a radio voice. That's just what you're made for.
No, but that guy has the, the, I mean, it's, it's, it's gold, it's pure gold when he talks. In fact, I wanted to figure out a way to bring, bring a couple of big, you know, carts that you stack those, those gold bars in.
Right.
And I just wanted him to talk into it and it just fill it up, you know?
Absolutely.
He, he's got that voice, but, but yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Well, Bill, uh, before we dig in today, you already saw the screen here and you know, we're all about just having a little bit of fun here on the show.
Let's have some fun.
Um, I have no idea what this song is gonna say. I don't even know what-
He hasn't even listened to it yet.
I don't even know what it's gonna sound like.
Alright.
But we joke around, whenever I see Commission One, Commissioner Two, when I see those trucks, I'm like, y'all better watch out.
That's right.
Because this is our friend's turf. This is-
There, that is true. This is us. Yep.
This is Bill Doggett's turf.
What are we doing? Let's hear it.
And here it is.
Oh my God.
Bill Doggett in Walker County Precinct Three, that's bound for a important man in Texas turf. Other folks, they know the word. From the morning till the night, Bill's the man who gets it right. Keeping order, doing good, in his boots and cowboy hood.
No, it's two shoes, but-
No, I'm, I'm both boots.
This is Bill's place, keeping it tight. Other commissioners, stay out of sight.
Oh my gosh.
County's proud and free. Bill Doggett, you can't disagree.
Oh my.
Man, this is good.
This is a pretty good one. Absolutely. This is great.
Cattle roarin', grass is green. Bill ensures the land is clean. Every road and every line, Bill's the guy who's right on time.
Oh, yeah.
Better watch out, Ernest Tubbs.
Yeah, this is rocking, man. This is great.
Bill makes this county turn. On this Texas land so wide, Precinct Three, that's Bill's pride.
I'm assuming you just wrote this last night, right?
Just wrote it. You wrote it while you were sitting there.
Yeah.
Other commissioners, stay out of sight. Walker County, proud and free. Bill Doggett, you can't disagree.
Oh my. This makes me wanna vote for me.
This is Bill's place, keeping it tight. Other commissioners, stay out of sight. Walker County, proud and free. Bill Doggett, you can't disagree.
Hey, this is good.
This is not bad.
This is Bill's place, keeping it tight. Other commissioners, stay out of sight.
Oh, that's awesome.
Now, that's not a threat, by the way, just full disclaimer, you know, so.
That's funny.
There you go.
That was funny. That's pretty good.
Because there are several other commissioners that do disagree several times. I've been known to bring some pretty wild ideas and sometimes I get them to bite. Yeah, not so often, but every now and then we get them to bite and we have a little bit of fun with it.
Well, I hope that's alright, Bill.
Well, that's, that's absolutely great. Hey, before we go too far, I do want to invite you to join the club that Jason and I are a member of. It's pretty exclusive.
Okay.
The Blue Gene and White T-shirt, and White Tennis Shoe Club.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I didn't even know y'all both having on.
You're halfway there. You lack your own probation. You got the jeans.
Alright, hold on, because you let this cat out of the bag. Here's, here's what we do real quick, alright? This is what, this is the fun of this show. It's also the fun of having, you know, of having friends for, for a while because in life, you, if you make more deposits than withdrawals, you can kinda have a good time, you know?
Absolutely.
Now, if this was Bill's first time on the show, he'd probably, I don't know if I'm ever coming back.
Yeah.
But, uh, but let's see if this, let's see if this'll work here this morning.
You're putting them out there. Here we go.
Hold on, here we go. Let's see if we can do this.
There they are.
Oh, there it is. And then look, and then the odd, and then the odd man out here.
We still got hope for you though. We got you in the jeans.
There you go.
We got him in jeans.
And I've seen him in white shoes. I have seen him in white tennis shoes.
There you go.
So I know you can do it, brother. Don't be afraid.
Alright. This is, man, this is just, this is classic gold this morning here in Huntsville, Texas. Well, we're having fun. I know, uh, we always-
Our viewership just dropped. I'm like-
No, it went up. It went up after that song. Uh, that's gonna be the number one song within a 20, uh, 20-inch radius.
A 20-inch, yeah, maybe all the way to that door right there, possibly. I don't know who has the copyright to that song. It might. I don't know who owns that song, but I'd like a copy of that song. That would be, that would be pretty great.
I'm gonna email that to you, Bill. So, well, Bill Doggett's here. He is our county commissioner precinct three. I know we're having a good time, but a lot of serious things going on in the county and, and Bill, uh, you've been working hard. Your staff's been working hard. Uh, this is a passion of yours that you've, you've had for a long time. And one thing that I always tell folks is, i- i- is about this community and the folks that are at work in this community. Um, you know, the journey for you, it's, it's been a while. You graduated from Sam Houston.
I did.
Um, and that was a little bit later on in life.
I did. I graduated, graduated at 51 years old. So there's, you know, if anybody's thinking about going back, I did it, actually 50. I've graduated at 50 years old and, um, it's an awesome thing to do. It's a great, you know, makes you feel good inside, like you, you know, accomplished or something. So it's never too late. I enjoyed the experience and then we had the, the thrill this last weekend of my youngest son graduating, um, with a master's degree from Sam Houston State University. So we're pretty excited about that.
Well, that's a great, great thing. I'm starting for the first time. You know, I'd, I applied to Sam when I, when I lived here the first time and, and I got in and I was gonna take business classes. Then of course, things changed and we moved. But I, when we came back, now working in ministry, I applied to Oral Roberts Online, ORU up in Tulsa and got there. So I'm actually starting in about a week and a half, which I'm a little nervous about, but, but I think it'll go alright. And then of course, what happens, my buddy at ORU, the voice of the Golden Eagles decides he's moving on. And I was like, you gotta be kidding me, man. But I'm happy to be in Huntsville, so.
Absolutely.
But, but Bill, let us know what's been going on in the county. I know a lot of projects, a lot of things going on. Give us some updates.
You know, we just, actually yesterday, pretty much put this year's, um, county budget to bed. And it was, it was a, it was a, I won't say it was a tough year, but it was, it was a good year because this year we got to do something special. In the, um, in the government world, I, I have a term. I call it like a, you know, legacy project. After you, when you leave, when you look back and you say, hey, I was a, in my case, a county commissioner, um, why is it a better place than when I got there? Well, one thing we did was committed to putting a new ambulance in the Riverside area. That, that's huge.
That is huge.
Walker County's growing like crazy. Um, our EMS has been stressed as far as, um, calls to volume. In fact, there's several times each month that we don't have an ambulance that can go. So we call on our friends in Montgomery County and Ventura Ambulance to help us out. But they're seeing the same thing we're seeing. Um, busy and a lot of times they can't help. So we partnered with the Emergency Service District One, which is kinda the Riverside area. They're building a building out there and in that building, they're gonna put a couple of ambulance bays and in exchange for that, letting us stay there, we're gonna put an ambulance and a full crew. And, um, about 25% of our calls go to the Riverside area anyway and we weren't out there. So that's a, to me, that's a huge thing, but it was expensive. It was, by the time we buy an ambulance and staff to six people, it's close to a million dollars.
So I, I wanted to pause you just for a minute because I don't think folks realize a lot of times when you hear of county commissioners, you think of roads, bridges, infrastructure. We're talking about, you guys are helping with the ambulance service too. There's, there's more to the story than just the roads and the bridges.
You know, it used to be that, um, the city, the hospital district, and the county all shared the cost of the EMS department. Then the, the city several years ago, and correctly so said, you know, our people are paying double, actually triple because we're paying the county tax that goes to the EMS, we're paying the city tax that goes to EMS, and we're paying the hospital tax that goes to the EMS. So that's not really fair. And then the hospital district spoke up and said, you know, we're kinda doing the same thing. Our people are paying hospital district tax and county tax. So they both asked, or I'm gonna say voluntold or whatever, said, hey, we're out. You know, we don't, we don't, we don't, we think that somebody should tote the whole note. And it came over to the county and, um, we worked some good relationships with the city where we can put ambulances in their fire station. So they didn't step completely out of the picture. They said, we don't wanna write you a check anymore, but we're here to help you, you know, stop, you know, store your ambulances and have offices. So it's, that's, that's worked out well for us. But that came over to the county to the point now, we're about five and a half, $6 million a year in EMS. And to be honest, um, we still underpay our people and, um, work them a lot of hours. We don't, we're not where we, where we need to be yet. Um, we're having some growing pains over there financially and staff-wise because, you know, we're 20 miles north of a place that pays $20,000 a year more than we do. So we, we sell, it goes right back to what you said. We sell the quality of life here in Walker County. You know, it's, you can, you can live here, be an EMS guy, have a real life life, have some calls per day, not 100 per day in your vehicle and have a, have a nice life. But that quality of life only makes up so many dollars per hour. You know, you have to be close to them and, and that's the add-on. So we're working on that. We increased some salaries. Uh, we have an absolutely amazing, um, chief now EMS director, um, Rachel Parker over there.
Yeah, I know Rachel. Wonderful, wonderful lady.
She has brought some amazing changes to that and, and we as a court have been trying to give them the tools we can within the, within the budget that we have. So that was our biggest challenge this year was to fund the EMS growth, the, the additional crew. And with the crew comes the equipment and, um, do all that, plus take care of our staff and provide as, as much as we could, what was ever available money-wise. And it was, it was tight, but it's in the books and I think it's a good one.
Well, Jason can maybe relate a little bit because you used to work EMS, right, Jason?
For a number of years.
Yeah.
Well, we're always looking for folks, brother.
Like I'm out of that one, man.
I'm done with that.
Well, if you did it, thank you for doing what you did then.
I did. And I understand what, what you were saying about, you know, the need for your response time and getting a, a, another crew up there and it is expensive.
It's big money.
Because the, what you don't realize, at bare minimum, you've got six people salary that you're gonna pay, bare minimum.
Yep.
That doesn't include the supervisor, doesn't include the ambulance and all the equipment, not to mention all the expendables that goes on there that may not get used, that have to been thrown away like your medicines.
Yep, absolutely. It's-
You know, and that stuff's expensive, guys.
And it's, it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of a big gulp kinda thing. You can't really incrementalize your way into it. It's like you just said, when you put a crew on, you, it's six people.
It, it minimum, six people.
And, um-
That's if nobody takes a day off and then you gotta have somebody else extra part-time or, or somebody's gotta work overtime. I know, I, I worked in Fort Bend County and they didn't have an in-charge on the shift after mine. So, you know, my, the, the gentleman, that was my supervisor, his favorite thing to do was call me at 7:30. Shift change was at 8:00 AM. He's, tag, you're it. Click.
No, he'd, he'd call, hey bubba.
No, he, I would pick up the phone and he would say, tag, you're it, and literally hang up.
Man, no time to respond.
You know, that's a, that's a special breed of people. Those in our-
It's a lifestyle.
It is. It absolutely is. And I wouldn't, I, I can't be the guy that would be the first guy on the scene of something. And, and they do it every single day. You know, I'm a watering sewer guy and people, I just stand in manholes, you know, chest deep in sewage and work in there and people are like, oh my God, how do you do that? And you're like, well, it's just, that's just what I, what I do. I'm just water sewer guy. EMS people, I talked to a guy, he retired after 20-something years and he's like, you know, it just finally got to me holding the last dead baby that I had. I just, I just, I had-
Yeah, it messes with you, eh?
Yeah. So, but I, I love them for what they do. I tell them every time I see them, I thank them for what they do, you know, and-
They got a tough job.
They do. So I appreciate what they do. So for us to throw money at them and get them equipment, that's the easy part, you know? It's, it's tough to find it in the books, but that's the easy part. The hard part is what happens after that, when they get up and go to work and, and take care of our community, you know? The, kinda back on the, on the Riverside Station, it was a, like a 20-minute response time. Well, in the EMS world, you have like this eight-minute rule. You know, if, if somebody's having like a heart attack or something, you have like, if you can get there in eight minutes, you got a shot at helping them. If it's after eight, it, a lot of times it turns into more of a recovery and a transport, you know, kind of a deal. So.
I mean, you still make the, the effort, but, but the, the likelihood of you being able to do something is not dramatically goes down. Oh yeah. I mean, from somebody who's, who's seen CPR actually work a very few times, um, you, you have to be there extremely quick.
Well, I learned something about you today. That's awesome. I appreciate what you did on that. That is great.
Well, Bill Doggett again here with us. Walker County Commissioner Precinct Three, friend of this program and a friend of this community. Bill, uh, I know I'm kinda spit firing some things at you this morning, but one that, that I've really started to look more into now, this was something that, uh, a couple of presidents ago, the Obama administration had put in some more highway act and we've been seeing a lot of chatter, especially as of late about I-14. Do you mind maybe touching base on, on some things that you may know about that and how it could affect Walker County?
I actually, um, attended a few of their meetings and did some research on it and was actually able to, and I had to go back and look at their new plan and see if they, if they stuck with it. But I-14 was, it's a, supposed to be like an inter, interstate highway, basically from the oil fields of West Texas, basically is where it's supposed to start. And at the end of the-
Is it coming off I-10?
No. And it'll end up, it's gonna go from there. They want it, people are signing up saying, hey, bring it here too. So they want it. They're gonna come basically across the 21, Highway 21 area, come down I-45 and get to Huntsville and then go east out 190. The initial plan that I saw was basically where the wind unit is to come across the north side of town, like 28, 21, and then catch 190 on the east of town, east side of town and then go out that way. That didn't make a lot of sense to me just because A, it's, it's prison property, but the school's up there and kind of a, kind of a messy way to get around town. So, um, I sent them a picture of going south to the Highway 19, overpass, So I sent them a picture of going south to the Highway 19, overpass loop out that way. And they actually sent me a picture back with kind of an updated design with it swinging south and going across 19 and going east. It's not, it's not a program that's going to happen like next week. When you talk to them, they're talking 20 or 30.
Yeah, I saw the Bryant, like the Bryant College Station, they said it could be 20 to 30 years from now.
It takes a while and it's a lot harder to get a route nowadays. You know, back in the 40s and 50s and even into the 60s, when the state or the feds wanted to get from here to there, they just drove their stakes and said, hey, you know, we're coming through here, we're going to eminent domain it, you know, tough luck for you. But nowadays, and we deal with it, not so much at the county because we don't, we don't take property, kind of a policy. But when you're at, at a city and you want to take somebody's property, you tell them, hey, we'd like, we need to go through here. And then the federal law and the state law says you give them a book and it's called the Property Owners Bill of Rights. You have to hand it to them as you tell them you're taking, that you wanted their property. And it spells out the process and if you make them an offer and they decline, you make them another offer and they decline. Then you file it at court and then they try to mediate it. And if they don't do that, then it goes to court and the court comes up with a judgment and then they have to put the money in and that's a multi-year.
Long process.
It can go along. And when you're doing that with one guy, that's tough enough. You're doing it with thousands of people.
Right.
And one guy in the middle has some reason why he can't give his property up. Cause the benchmark is there's no other reasonable path. You know, you're like, I have to go through here because there's no other reasonable path. And all you have to do is a property owner, say, well, you can go around me and go that way. And that opens up a whole new deal. So it's, it's tricky, it'll be nice because it's a great energy corridor, like say from West Texas to Corpus Christi, to I think of kind of the Beaumont area.
Yeah, and then it goes.
And then straight east.
Then it keeps going, yeah, the Gulf Coast Highway or something, I think is what they're kind of nicknaming it as it goes.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a big thing and it's, you know, the folks, when you look back, like during the Eisenhower days when they did the, you know, the interstate freeway system, that was, that was vision back there, you know, that we're still benefiting from today. And people like the high speed rail project, you know, that was, I don't know if it's still going or not.
They've been talking rail for like 50 years.
You know, the, the Dallas to Houston, he's had the golden try. It was Dallas, Houston, then they actually got back to Austin, back to Dallas, but the Dallas to Houston was the first leg. And it's, it's kind of a, that's kind of a NIMBY project too, the not in my backyard project. It's like, hey, I'd love to have it, but I just don't want to go through my yard. So they had some public hearings on that and a lot of, a lot of people showed up and like, oh, they're doing this and they're doing that. And, and I caught one guy in the parking lot and he was really, really, really vocal. And he was somewhere from north of town. I was like, ask him, how'd you get here? Oh, I just, you know, I just drove, I said, so you drove down the land that somebody else gave up, you know, to, to get here, that we all benefit from that project.
Right.
To complain about the next generation, you know? And he wouldn't, he was, he was, he was just a, you know, just a grumpy guy. And he didn't, he didn't say, oh, that's a, you know, quite a moment now I realized I was wrong. He's like, well, they can find other ways. But, but that's kind of how I look at it, like, you know, somebody back in the 40s and 50s and 60s knocked on a guy's door and said, hey, you know, we need a freeway through here. And that guy was probably reluctant, they go here in town, there was property that was cut in half, a lot of property on I-45. The freeway went right through the middle of us, people have property on both sides that didn't, you know, didn't used to have a freeway there.
Yeah.
But you give it up for the, you know, for the good of others and it pays dividends forever. And that's what I-14 is going to be, you know, can we come through here? We don't want you here, you know, but once it's there, then it's, then it's a life changer, you know?
It's one reason, Bill, I, I just respect you and, and all of those that serve in public office because, I mean, you've got to, you guys have to make some hard decisions sometimes and it's, and it, and it may not be the popular decision. And, and I've had people back when I was in Georgetown, back in the day, were like, man, you ought to run for council. And even here, you know, there's an at large position that opened up and they're like, man, you should try that. And, and I said, I just, you know, I just don't have what it takes right now to, with children and everything else going on and, and all that. But then I also need to learn a lot and I need to get a, I'll just say it, I'll just be honest, I need to get a stronger backbone because you've got to make a lot of tough decisions in, in your role. Can you maybe highlight just kind of how you navigate through some of those processes? Not trying to have a tough conversation, but how you kind of navigate through that because, because it is tough in any role.
It is hard, it is hard. And what you've, what you, what I found out in my, like I've been a commissioner for seven and a half years and I was in administration at the city for probably a decade before that, is, you know, you can't, you can't, A, you can't take anything home with you, you know? And we have an agreement on our commissioners court, and I love the guys for that, is that a lot of times we, we disagree vehemently up there. But when it's over, it's like, hey, that was agenda item 21, now we're on agenda item 22. And it's about, you know, everybody having a picnic in the park tomorrow. So, so we love each other again. And then when the meeting's over, you know, you go eat lunch or whatever, and you realize that that was just an agenda item, that's all it was. And you have to, you have to do that. You can't take, I, I don't want to use the word, you can't take ownership because you own the vote, but you can't let your, you know, your attachment to something, you know, ruin, ruin your conversation, ruin, you know, make you stick to something that somebody probably has a better point, you know? So I, I try to keep a level head on everything. I don't get too excited about stuff. And when you make a, a tough call, like this year in the budget, we're, our tax rate is probably going to actually creep up a little bit, you know? We, and there's people out there that can't pay their bills right now, you know, people out there that struggle to feed themselves. We saw a lot of that when the floods came out in my neighborhood, I'd count, and people live in apps, not even paycheck to paycheck, paycheck to almost paycheck.
I understand, 100%.
And then you're going to say, you know what, it's really important to Walker County that we improve our EMS service this year. And like I said, once again, that was our big tax hit this year. So I know it's going to be tough on people, but for the, for the benefit of mower, of everybody, some people are really going to, are going to struggle. So we, we watch other places that we can maybe, you know, cut back on or just do what you can do best. And if you go home at night, you know, I've kind of have a corny saying, you know, what can I do to make council of Walker County a little bit better each day? That's just what I do. And if I go home at night and I say, you know, I did my best and the decision was hard and it may be popular, maybe unpopular, but I can live with how I voted, then I'm good with it. My wife doesn't believe that, she knows it eats me up inside, but that's, that's what I have to do. Cause like I say, sometimes you ruin, you ruin people's days, you know? You, a big developer coming to town wants to build this and you're like, I would add 500 low income houses to our area, but it doesn't come anywhere close to what we, what we need for our development pro, our development code and regulations. So we can't let you do it. And so, you know, so you've messed up a guy's, you know, thousands of dollars of investment and probably people who are looking for smaller homes to move into and stuff like that, you probably alienated them from that. But you also don't want our town to be like, was it, they call it Colony Ridge, Plum Grove, whatever, that big controversial subdivision over there.
Yeah, I remember hearing about that.
Yeah, you don't, you don't want that. So you, we put in security stops and.
Safeguards in a way.
Yeah, that's, that's what the word, absolutely safeguards, like sorry, you know, I, I can't waiver off of that. And then, and you have people come in that, that want to, we call them variances in the county, come in and, and say, hey, you know, y'all want a 32 foot road, but you know, this 21 foot road should be fine. And I have a reputation, I guess at court of, I'm not a very good variance guy. I'm like, you know, we wrote the rules, you knew the rules when you drew your picture. And you show up with your picture stamped and ready to go and it's nowhere close. So you know you're getting a no out of me. So a lot of them will tell me going in, I know I'm getting a no out of you. But I'm going to try to sell three other guys and do that, so.
And that's why, and for those guys, that's why it's good that there's other guys there, right?
Absolutely right, absolutely right. Cause sometimes, you know, you, you think you've got a good pet project that, and then you get up there and you like, I lose, I don't lose as many four to one as I used to, I used to lose a lot of them four to one. But you know, you, you get talked out of it by the other guys and they're like, look, I understand where your heart was at, but A, the money wasn't there and B, it just doesn't fit what we're doing, so hope you're good with that. And I'm like, absolutely, I just go cause some trouble someplace else.
See, that's why, that's why I wouldn't.
Go cause trouble somewhere else.
Yep.
See, this is why I wouldn't be good in, in your role or, or any of these roles right now. Because I'm learning as I get older that you can't please everybody and I've learned to say no and it's really hard for me. I'm not a no type of guy, but I just worry if I was in that, if I was in your position, I would just be, oh yes, oh yes. And I've, and I've learned though, especially over the last three years, I really have learned, it's been some of the hardest decisions I've ever had to make. It's saying no. And, and you know, I believe that, that we truthfully can learn something from every single person that we come into contact with. And, and one of the things that I'm grateful for, for, for Ray Hernandez from the chamber, was he told me that sometimes we have to have those difficult conversations. And, and he's exactly right, we do have to have those tough conversations, especially in the roles of, of public service.
You do, and you know, kind of going back to the, to the people part of it, and it's really, especially as we get close to this upcoming like presidential election. In the world I live in, you know, I'm a politician by trade, but I tell everybody, I'm like the world's worst politician because I don't run around with my Republican flag, you know, waving it, stuff like that. I, I do what I think is right. And, and really what, the, the world I live in is where about 70% of Americans live in, you know? There's like 15 or 20% on this outside that are super vocal, the hard left people, the hard right people, and I love them both. I know all of them. I'm a, a lot of my good friends, if you're an old time Huntsville person, 50, 60% of the people you know either are or were Democrats. And now it, you know, the thing is to be a Republican and conservative and, and that's my job at the court is to be as conservative and as tight as I can with the money. So I have, so I live in that world too. So I have friends on both sides of the aisle, I'll say it that way, but I hate that there's an aisle. You know, I hate that you just can't have a conversation and with, with somebody these days without a political conversation, these days without having to basically, you know, set your flag on one side or the other. And that, that's always, I, I use the word, it bothers me, you know, because, because I do, I try to, I have not made a single decision up there to kind of quote a Kennedy thing. I haven't made a, a single decision, is this what a Democrat would vote for? Is this what a Republican would vote for? It's like, what's the right thing for Walker County and just, you know, just live with the results.
And I think, I think that's the positive of our county is, is I still feel like, you know, and not going down that political train side of things because we don't get into a lot of that here, of course, on this platform. But, but I will say this, that we live in a county to where people from both sides, from what I see on the outside looking in, people from both sides can still come together for the most part in a, in a very amicable way and be friends and talk about things. And I think that's a Roma, it's, it's why I feel like our county in this area of Texas is a shining beacon for other communities to follow. One about, most importantly for me as a guy of faith is the way that we honor faith and honor God here in this community, in this county. I think that's so important that we still hold tight to those values. But then number two is the way that the people treat each other here. And, and if you're looking for bad, you're going to find it. But if you're looking for good, there is so much more good here that outweighs the bad as far as attitudes and people not.
Correct.
And that's what I love about this, I've been in communities where it's kind of a balance, I've been in communities where it's the other way.
Right.
And I'm proud to say here in Walker County, thanks to the leadership of you and many others that serve in our public office, have done a great job of, of that balance being tilted in favor of the good.
Absolutely is, absolutely is. So on the, on the good, let's jump over to safe house conversation.
Yeah, that's where I was hoping, yeah, so, so that's where we were heading with this.
That's awesome.
So let us know, you know, speaking of the good and, and all of these organizations and nonprofit organizations.
Yeah.
You know, you have been tied into Safe House for quite some time. We had to pivot very quickly with our HLI project and I think Fraser Stanley Jones had called you and said, hey, can we come over there and paint? Uh, to help out, but this organization is so important. Let us know about your heart to serve on Safe House and, and kind of how you got into that.
You know, Safe House serves the, the victims of sexual assault and, and domestic violence. And without, without a whole lot of details in my life, just not really important, but I, I did not, I, I experienced that growing up. And so when we came out here, we're in Walker County and this, years and years and years ago, we found out about Safe House, my wife and I, and we were big supporters of it. And then they, they had some tough times over there and we just kind of fell off the radar with them. But then a few years ago, our good friend Terry Coleman and Karen Hewitt actually asked me of, hey, you know, I know you support them. Would you be interested in serving on the board with us? So, so I've joined the board two years ago this past June, so I'm in my third year now. And it's been an awesome, awesome adventure for me over there. It's a, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a behind the scenes organization, like, oh, that's the Safe House, you know, people kind of hear about that. But we don't, we don't have public success stories, basically. We, our people generally want to be either anonymous, a lot of them are there because they're trying to hide, you know? So we don't, we don't march them out and say, hey, look at, look who we've got here, you know? So, so it, we struggle, excuse me, we struggle sometimes with our public image for, because we don't have a good, we don't have a really good product. We don't, you know, we can't say, hey, you know, we did 25 whatevers. We, but what we, what we can say is as of July of this year, we've had over 500 people come through our door.
Wow.
Probably, well, we serve four counties, Walker, Polk, San Jacinto and Trinity. And probably that 500, 300 are from Walker County. And it's our friends and neighbors living in bad situations and they leave in the middle of the night and they grab their, their kids and whatever the heck else they can grab. And they call our toll free number and get ahold of one of our people. And we take them in and we help them start putting their lives back together. And it's, it's not just the, it's not just the counseling part of like, hey, you know, you're okay now, you're in a safe spot, which is a huge thing for a lot of them. But it's also the real life life part, like, hey, did you think to grab your birth certificate when you left? You know, no, never did. You know, did you grab your social security card, your identification, your insurance cards? Did you grab your driver's license, you know, did you grab, what did you bring? And they're like, you know what, I brought me and my three kids that he beat the heck out of us last night. So we finally had enough. So what can you do? And, and we started on the path and for the most part, it's a, it's a, it's a frustrating deal because sometimes it takes several iterations, you know? And the, the math says that it takes seven times for, for a person to leave that, a, a relationship before they finally say, I'm out. That means, and I grew up in that house once again, it, sometimes it takes six times of bad experiences before you finally say, you know, this is, this isn't how it's supposed to live. So they come to us and we, and it's, it's not, it's not cheap to do what we do. Cause we do, we buy them clothes, we get them into housing, we get toys for the kids, we get them in school. We get them, but we get them more counseling when they leave. Sometimes we give them money to get to family members and stuff like that. So we get, we get several grants, but the grants pay mostly for our, our staff, which is nice. We don't have to fundraise for staff parts, but just the cost of doing business with all the other stuff I just mentioned is, it's expensive and it's a challenge. So we do a lot of fundraisers. And in Walker County, I use the term fundraiser fatigue, you know, because these, these businesses that, that really give to the nonprofits, a nonprofit shows up on their door, if it's not weekly, it's daily, you know, hey, can you, can you give me this?
Yeah, I'm there.
Absolutely.
I get, I get hit up quite regularly.
Regularly. And, and they come, they come through, you know, and you, you wish you didn't have to be there. You know, you wish you didn't say, you know, you didn't have to say, hey, could I have 10 bucks or can I have something auctioned off? But the grants we have require us to, you know, contribute our own. And we have some fabulously generous people here in Walker County and some fabulous businesses that are helping us out. And so I stay with them to keep them, not to keep them, to help them to keep growing and to stay being a success. And so my, my personal tie to it got me there, but then getting here and seeing that there's actually people in my community, it's not some anonymous group or whatever like that, it's the people in my community. And I, and I don't know a single name of anybody that's in there, it's all anonymous. So, but I know it's folks from here and it kind of goes back to making it, you know, a little bit better every day. So I, I'll stay with them as, as long as they need me over there. And, and our community needs them and, but I think more importantly, they need our community.
That's right. More information online at safehouse.org, that's S-A-A-F-E.
Right.
House.org. And, and Bill, I just appreciate the, the heart of a servant, I talk about that a lot. And you have a heart of a servant, serving this community as our commissioner, but also serving and giving back in, in many ways, including the Safe House. And it's an organization I wish we didn't have to have here in, in Walker County. I did want to mention this, that, and this is a very serious thing. I know, I, I say this a lot, but I know that we have fun and we joke around the show, but maybe this morning, you're, you're in that situation. You're, you're in a, in a household that has the unfortunate circumstances of domestic abuse and, and you're worried and you're worried about, you know that you need out, you know that you've got to get those kids out of there, but you're so scared about leaving because you're worried about what's going to happen to you. I want you to know the Safe House is going to provide resources and tools and the things that you need to help. You, you're never going to get over that. It's like a friend of mine that, that was talking about addiction, he says, you never get over it, but you learn to get through it.
Right.
Please, please, please allow the Safe House to help you through this. Don't stay in that situation one more moment if you can. And step aside and call the Safe House, talk to them first, get some advice from them. And the biggest thing that I can tell you is just know that they're going to do everything that they can to take care of you and to help you and to, and to find a way to keep you safe. That's, I think that may be the, the biggest fear too, Bill is, and I, you know, I, I'm not going to, you know, say that I've ever been in that situation, but what I will say is I think sometimes people are, from the folks that I've talked to, they're scared that if they get out, that something bad is going to happen to them.
Right.
Or, or they'll get found.
They'll get found. And, and once they kind of relate back to me, you do get found, you know, you get found. So one of the first things they tell them is, hey, look, you know what, it's, it's, A, it's not your fault, you know, you don't deserve to get beat up. And number two, there's a whole lot better world out there, let us help you get there. Let's, let's get you out that front door, let's get you to the people that can help you and we will do what we can to get you up and running, let you know there's other people out there that do give a damn about you and that do love you. And we will do what we can to get you to those people and let's get you and them kids on the road to a, a better life.
One last thing too, I wanted to, to mention is maybe it's not even physical abuse, it's mental abuse. And, and again, pick up the phone and call Safe House and let them start. Uh, Bill Doggett serves there on the board and, and there's many great folks. I'm so thankful that Tammy, where she's at in her role over there, you know, really, really engage in the community. And it's such a, such an important vital organization. In fact, one of the big events coming up here in October is the Jellathon, we're, we're gonna, looking forward to that. Hello Huntsville is going to be a part of that and we're going to do some live streaming for, for Safe House. And, and we really want to see the community come out and support this in, in a very, very big way. We know that there's a lot of pots, as Bill talked about, there's a lot of pots in the community that people are asking you to put things in. But spread that out a little bit and if you can put a little bit in that Safe House pot, it's going to go a long way.
It does, it absolutely does. And we're kind of coming up, what they call the, you know, the season of giving, the last, the last quarter of the year is the time when people start, historically for us, we kind of start seeing the end of the year donations and stuff like that. So on our website at safehouse.org is various ways to, to donate to us. Um, I think we got a little QR code, you can stop by our office. If you have clothing and housewares that are, you know, sitting in a closet you don't use. I'd like to touch on this real quick on how much time we have.
No, sure, go for it.
People show up to us once again with, you know, the shirt on their back. And one thing, we have a good relationship with, with, with the Huntsville housing here where we can get them into a home, but you know, you're going to walk into an empty house, that's what you got. So we have a, a shop, a resale shop that we sell to people and have really good deals and prices. But we also allow them people just starting, you know, and I'm going to say a lady, but there are, there are men that come to us, but by far the vast majority is, is, is women with kids. We take them in there and we kind of turn them loose and say, you know, get what you need, get your shirts, get your socks, get your toiletries and here's some pots, here's some pans, here's a chair, you know, just you can have something in this house when you move off in it. So folks that have garages full of stuff that Dody doesn't use. when you move off in it. So folks that have, um, garages full of stuff that Aunt Doty doesn't use anymore.
Good memory.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bring it on, you know, bring it by. It's right over here at 15th Street and Sam Houston Avenue and just.
And you laugh, but we've done a lot of that.
That's awesome. That is awesome.
I can't tell you how many loads that we have taken up there to the Safe House in, in recent months.
That is awesome. You know, we get, you know, for kids, we give them, they're, you know, people bring toys and all kinds of stuff. So, you know, to give them something that's theirs, that's not under the control of this person that was controlling them is, is just huge. Well, I keep using the term life changing and stuff like that, but, but that's what it is, you know, to get somebody, it changed our life when we got it. We didn't have a Safe House when I was growing up. We had a neighbor on the other side of town that took us in.
That was the Safe House.
That was, that was it. But you lived in absolute fear that you were going to get found. And, um, and you did get found in today's world. Um, with Facebook and Instagram and Tik Tok, you, you get found immediately, you know? So, um, having programs in place that protect those people is as important as anything else we do. And I guess maybe to wrap it up, my.
Sure.
Our folks over there at the Safe House, I'm Tracy, Tammy, um, all the other folks we have over there, Cheryl and Colleen and everybody. They work their butts off, you know? It's, we don't pay them rich people wages. It's a labor of love for a nominal wage. And, um, I love them all. I can't thank them enough for what they do and for what they do for our community.
Awesome. Well, Bill, appreciate you also, uh, emcee of many events that I end up not being able to attend. So I want to shake your hand on that. Thank you, Bill. Give him some public acknowledgement. I was supposed to be there for, uh, Lassure Your Imagination last year. Got hand, foot and mouth. Supposed to be there for Rotary.
Yeah.
And, uh, ended up, uh, didn't want to upset father-in-law, you know, so.
Absolutely. Right.
He wouldn't have got upset. It was a family. We, we had something planned a, a long time before that. So I just appreciate again, a servant's heart. And that's what you have, Bill. And, and thank you for all that you do in our community.
Absolutely. I love being here and spreading the good news along with you.
Awesome. Jason, did you have any final comments, questions for Bill?
No, I just want to say, you know, I think Bill does an excellent job serving our community.
I appreciate that. He lives down one of my more bumpy roads. So that's, I know that was tough for him to say on public.
No. He, he sends a maintenance down every once in a while.
Every now and every now and then.
There's a few lug nuts that came off the old truck, but we're all right.
No, I'm not worried about it. I got a little tractor. I can go, I can fix a bad part if I need to.
There you go.
I don't mind.
Well, good, Bill. Well, that's what it's all about, friends, is, is lifting this community up, finding ways to, to come together and work together. And if you've got any questions, please reach out to the, uh, precinct three office. Bill is so, uh, big on just communication and being out in the public. He's not a, a public servant that hides behind a desk. He's out there. He's serving the community. Uh, you'll see him almost there. I see you all the time driving the truck, especially when I'm going down 19 there. I was like, there's Bill. I didn't want to wave and, you know, distract you.
Off in the ditch, yeah.
Yeah. So, but.
Hey, my, uh, my.
If you see him outside the office, that's what, that, that's how you know.
Yep.
Yep. I do get out and about. I was in a dump truck last week. Um, been a while since I drove one of those, but we were short a couple of people. So you've seen Bill cruising down the road in a big old dump truck, like he knew what he was doing.
I saw that, I saw that hat that said Bubba Gump on it. And I was like, is that Bill Doggett?
That's kind of sad.
Had, had, had the pack of cigarettes rolled up in the sleeve and like a big tattoo on the arm. I saw it.
Hanging out the window. That was me. Yeah, that was me. Hey, um, I give myself a photo all the time. It's nine, three, six, 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 one, five, one, seven, six. Uh, I answer it all the time or answer text. Somebody has any questions, shoot it to me and I, I get back with everybody.
Awesome. Well, Bill, God bless you, man. So great to have you and, and, uh, always welcome. Come back in a couple of months. We like to have you on and get some updates.
I'll do it. I'll do it. Appreciate it. Appreciate what you do, Rob.
You bet. That's Bill Doggett, our, uh, county commissioner, precinct three here in, uh, Walker County. Now with his official theme song that you'll be hearing blaring in the Chevy Silverado as it comes down the road.
I am playing that song.
He's going to, that's going to be his intro when he comes into commissioner's court, you know, like they do for, for like the wrestling or the boxers or whatever, you know?
Have my little flashing LED lights as they come in.
Yeah.
We'll get you, we'll get you the boxing bands.
I could see it going over the PA system and commissioner's court.
That's great.
I'm, I guarantee you that, that whatever my last day at court is, I'm doing that. I'm doing that.
We're going to have it.
Let me know. I want to come see the look on everyone's face.
I want to do it. I will absolutely do it.
Keyword, as we wrap it up here with Bill, keyword is S.H.S.U. Text it in. I've got a Cafe Texan gift card coming your way today. Big thanks to our friend Tiffany Gobble and all the staff over there. Vance Howard, uh, just wonderful, wonderful owner and, and does so much for this community. He said, hey, we want to, we want to figure out a way to get involved with your program. And so they are so gracious and donating, uh, quite a few gift cards they give us each month. And you can win one of them today. All you gotta do is text in S.H.S.U. along with your name on the Zero Degree Creations phone and text line at nine, three, six, three, three, nine, zero, one, three, nine. We'll continue on here in a moment. Make sure you comment. Let us know that you're out there. We'll have our special walk-up segment here in a moment where we recognize all of you that are part of the show today. And as we continue, the show is brought to you every tactical Tuesday by our friends at Guardian Defense. For all of your personal safety needs here in Walker and surrounding counties, please go to guardiandefense LLC.com. We'll step aside, take a break. Jason and I'll close it out. When we come back, stay with us. More to come. This is your show. It is Good Morning Huntsville.
This is Guardian Defense in Huntsville, Texas, a trusted, family-owned and operated gun store and range in the heart of East Texas. Guardian Defense is your one-stop destination for Texas LTC, NRA, basic pistol and rifle courses, pistol refresher training, as well as a wide selection of quality firearms and ammunition. And Guardian Defense empowerment is within reach through their Texas DPS approved license to carry classes. Certified instructors will guide you through every facet of firearm safety, conflict resolution, and the pertinent legal aspects. Book now to become proficient and responsible in handling a firearm with complete confidence. For the eager learners, the fundamentals of pistol and rifle usage await discovery in their comprehensive eight-hour NRA basic courses. You're invited to connect with Guardian Defense on Facebook and Instagram, or give them a call at nine, three, six, two, nine, three, zero, three, six, four. You can also visit them online at guardiandefense LLC.com. Guardian Defense, your reliable partner in mastering firearm safety and acquiring quality firearms in the heart of Texas. The Oak Ridge Disciple House is a faith-based, 501(c)(3) nonprofit Christian character building ministry, helping men 18 and older who are suffering from drug and alcohol addictions. If you or someone you know needs help, there is light at the end of the tunnel and that light can be found through the Oak Ridge Disciple House. For more information, visit oakridgedisciplehouse.com.
Hey, I'm Denise Alieas, business account specialist at Walker County Federal Credit Union. And our business is helping you take care of your business. In addition to personal accounts, Walker County Federal Credit Union also offers business accounts and business lending for commercial customers. We're devoted to taking care of the needs of our individual members and helping our business members with their financial success too. Call us today and find out how easy it is to work with Walker County Federal Credit Union, member NCUA.
Welcome to Magnolia Kennel of Huntsville, where we've been caring for your furry family members for over four decades. Nestled at eight, 77 IH 45 South, our kennel is a perfect retreat for your pet. With a climate-controlled facility, spacious exercise yards, we ensure a comfortable and enjoyable stay. At Magnolia Kennel, we offer a range of options, including overnight boarding, extended stay boarding and doggy day out. But that's not all. We also provide additional pampering services like baths and nail care to keep your pets looking and feeling their best. Making a reservation is a breeze at magnoliekennel.com. We take great pride in our dedication to the community, supporting our local fire departments by providing oxygen pet masks. Stay connected and enjoy adorable pet updates by following us on Facebook.
Magnolia Kennel of Huntsville is where dogs get to be dogs. Visit us at magnoliekennel.com to book your pets next day. We can't wait to meet your four-legged family members.
Hey friends, Rob Hip here for Elliot's Jewelers. I wanted to take a brief moment to let you know, if you're looking for someone in the jewelry business right here in Huntsville, look no further than my good friend Elliot Herslick. He's helped me out time and time again, whether it was that wedding band that I needed a while back or that special ring for Bridget. He's always been there for me. He goes above and beyond. He's also a person who gives back to the local community. I like to do business with those who give back. And that's exactly what Elliot Herslick of Elliot's Jewelers does. Hey, if you feel like you don't know what to do, maybe you don't know where to turn, what to look for, Elliot is the person. Again, it's Elliot's Jewelers. You can visit him online at elliotsjewellers.com for more information. And when you call him, let him know that you heard from his good friend, Rob Hip. Again, it's Rob here for Elliot's Jewelers. Visit him online at elliotsjewellers.com.
Hi, I'm Billy Coffin, manager of Sam Houston Memorial Funeral Home. We know times of loss are tough and you need a place to feel comfortable and cared for. At Sam Houston Memorial Funeral Home, we pride ourselves on being with you during those really tough days. You can rest assured that we will be on your side and by your side every step of the way. Thank you for your trust. Sam Houston Memorial Funeral Home, supporting families every day, every step.
All right, friends, back at it here, eight, 46 in the AM and, uh, we're going to be wrapping it up pretty quick. There's a new segment that we do on the show and, uh, Jason, you're a, you know what the segment is. You haven't been a part of it yet though.
Yeah, but you expect me to read that?
It's that time to shine. You're.
You're going to have to read it, man.
Read what?
Read whatever you're putting on the screen. You know, my old eyes can't.
Well, here we go. This is the time to shine for all of our friends that are on the show this morning.
I mean, everybody seemed to have to put my cheaters on.
Your cheaters?
Yeah, man. I carry cheaters.
There we go. I got a little new walk-up music this morning. Somebody said the other one was a little too rough.
New walk-up music?
See, here we go. All you gotta do is comment on the show and we say hello to you every morning now. You ready for this one?
Come on, put them out there.
Jamie Saucier, check it out. Jamie again is always the number one.
He wait, he waits.
Fastest.
He is.
Number one. No one else ever beats Jamie Saucier.
He's waiting for it, man.
Number one.
Then you got Quentin Glaze.
Quentin Glaze, the most engaged person on Hello Huntsville, the number one engager. It's his nickname. Carolyn Gibson, you know who she is?
Yes.
Jason, the grandmother of Huntsville, joining us this morning. Jennifer Augustinetti, good morning. It's a terrific Tuesday. It's a terrific tactical Tuesday.
Yes, it is.
You have to start saying it like that. Tactical Tuesday.
No.
Tactical Tuesday. You gotta get excited, Jason.
I'm not, I'm not that way. Then you got your sister.
My sister. My sister from the same mister. Rebecca Shaker joining. Say, morning y'all. Happy Tuesday. How about the Horn family? Richard and Linda saying, good morning, Huntsville. Have an amazing day. They actually said, good morning. They didn't say Murnan. They said, good morning.
Right. The one that says Murnan, I hadn't seen him on the list yet.
Richard Horn, Mr. Horn, you are a man's man. That is a man's man. If you need a guy in your life that is tough, that don't play around.
That's him.
Richard Horn is your guy. Appreciate you, brother. Always good to see you. Ellen Duke, our friends from Trinity, Texas. Just get a little bit excited. You kind of leave off some of Trinity, Texas, joining us this morning. Deneen, how you doing? They're joining us from Trinity, Texas this morning. Good morning, Huntsville. Ellen Duke joining us. Richard, the Horn family. They knew it. Jason, they knew.
They knew it.
Perla. Pea bunny, pea dough. You don't like that name? I can tell. Jason's looking at me like, just stop.
There's a lot of things I will answer to, but that's not one of them.
Not happening. Carolyn remembered too. She said, that's it. That's it. She remembered. Uh, by the way, my sister gave you permission. I put this up when Bill was talking by accident. So people were like, what do you mean? Says you can slap him on the back of the head for me, Jason. I had that up when Bill was talking. I, I was like, Jason, don't slap him. Uh, Karen Dinman, how about it? Karen Dinman over at Walker County Federal Credit Union. I love that. Good morning, my friends. You are our friend, Karen Dinman. We appreciate you. Got a new commenter on the show this morning.
Yes, we do.
Who is that, Jason?
I don't know. Let me get close enough to see.
Pete Charba. I think that's who it is, right? Pete Charba.
Yep.
Joining us. Asa Jowers on this morning. It's the hour of power with Asa Jowers. We're going to have that Asa coming up. Get ready. Thank you for all that you do. Asa works, I believe for our district.
Yeah.
And, uh, she's getting ready to get real busy.
Promotes, promotes it.
She is getting ready to get really busy. We love all of our district HISD employees. Thank you. Speaking of which, Kathy Swatcher won yesterday on the show.
Awesome.
Our HISD trustee saying, good, good morning Huntsville. Many others also joining in this morning. Christine Mitchell, we see you. Good morning. Wayne Norman, I see you. I'm stalking you, buddy. It tells us who's on a few of them.
Yeah.
Doesn't tell us on, on all of them, but a few of them. Let's see who else is here today. Now, that's all I know, but I know there's a lot more. So.
Yeah.
That's your time to shine.
Show all of them.
All right, final. Here we go. Jason, you ready? And the number one guest on the show today, T Thompson. Come on, T, are you feeling it?
No.
That's her air guitar.
That's only Rick Boning and I do that together. Thanks a lot, guys. There you go. It's your time to shine. New segment on the show where we like to acknowledge all of you. And some of you probably text in for the reason that you don't want to be acknowledged and that's perfectly fine. Uh, if you don't want to let us know you're out there, but we'll find you one way or another. Do have a couple of other things today that we want to get to, and then we'll briefly talk about Guardian Defense and classes and those kinds of things. And, uh, today is internet. It's my day.
It's what?
It's my day.
It's your day.
Yes. It's International Left-Handers Day today. You lefty?
No, I'm not lefty.
Nope. My mom is.
All right. Uh, Left-Handers Day today. Oh, man, just keep on coming, baby. It's another day of mine. National Filet Mignon Day. Yes. Oh, it's the third day. I'm not even lying. I'm getting excited. I'm trying to contain it. It's also National Kool-Aid Day.
Kool-Aid and Left-Handers Day and Filet Mignon?
Here's another.
I bet you'd have Filet Mignon and Kool-Aid.
I would. I would have Filet Mignon and Kool-Aid and eat it and drink it with my left hand. I mean, that's everything you could do. Some also say today is National Skeptics Day, but I doubt it. So it's National Skeptics Day as well. Uh, Sarah Huckabee Sanders, former White House Press Secretary. Remember when Trump was there? She did a great job. You know, she's an Arkansas governor. She's only 42 years old today. Only 42. Uh, man, I'm sitting there thinking, what am I doing in my life being on this show? It's unbelievable, you know? I could have been a governor.
Could have been anything.
Could be. Just kidding. I love doing this. Sorry. We got the best job, Sarah, by the way, being on the show. Uh, today's impossible question. Americans collectively do this 93 million times a day. Americans do this collectively, all together, 93 million times a day. Do you have any idea what it is?
Not a clue.
We'll get to it in just a moment. Did you know today, some experts say freezer door handles are the most overlooked germy things in grocery stores? Ooh, think about that the next time you get that Red Baron pizza out of that bad boy.
Who eats Red Baron pizza?
What are those other ones that are like 98 cent Totino's?
Totino's, man. I used to live off those when I was poor.
Man, what kind of pizza do you want? Man, I want Totino's. That's my pizza. That's the one I like. Totino's, baby.
Yeah, when they were like 99 cents.
Everybody's got a friend named Totino too. You just don't know it. I've got a couple of friends. I'm going to start calling them Totino. What's that Totino?
Mm-hmm.
That's a better nickname for you, Totino.
Totino.
Do you like that one? Better than Perla?
Anything's better than Perla.
Man, I like that. What up, Tote? We can nickname you Tote for short. What up, Tote? It's like, uh, in Spanish, isn't the word, um, uh, what is the word for cousin in Spanish?
Don't get me lied.
Um.
Oh, I know this. Hold on. Hold on.
Primo.
Primo. That's right. Yes. See, Deneen, boom, bring that in. Primo. There's a water company called Primo Water Company. And I told a friend, I was like, it's your cousin's water companies. What are you talking about? It says Primo. It's your cousin. All right. Uh, a couple of other things today. Uh, 37% of people say they will not return to a restaurant because there was no soap in the bathroom. No soap in the bathroom. Go to eat. Uh, when I leave a bathroom, Jason, do you push the door in front? Or do you put your hand up as high as it'll go and open it? Or do you use your foot? What do you do?
I either use my foot or I use a paper towel.
Okay.
Cause I see too many people that use the restroom and do not wash.
Most people throw away 92% of instructions without ever using them.
I believe that.
The first instruction should be, don't throw away the instructions.
I'm bad about that.
You're very.
My dad was not bad about it. He would write notes all over instructions. He would never throw away instructions. He, that's how he learned how to do a lot of things. I give my dad credit. He was really good at, at a lot of things like that. No doubt, about 10% of us say checking on the pets is the first thing we do when we get out of bed in the morning. 10%. I, I check on them right away. Cause I want to make sure they're ready to, they, they wake me up.
My pets are ready to go when I get up.
Yes, they are.
Uh, here's one. Petting a furry friend a few minutes relieves stress. Uh, this has been talked about before. College students who petted a cat or dog lowered their levels of cortisol, stress hormone by nine percent.
Really?
So, uh.
That ought to be good. Man, leave my, leave my chest hair alone.
I was thinking the same thing.
Deneen's about to start petting. She's about to lower the stress level. Poor Jason's getting picked on all the time, man.
It's fine. I take it.
I felt my stress level go down just thinking about it though, Jason.
I'm going to start petting you on your head.
Yeah, that's fine. According to a recent survey by careerbuilder.com, the most dangerous job in America, guess what it is?
What is it?
President of the United States.
Really?
Nine percent of presidents, this is a pretty alarming number. Nine percent of presidents have been assassinated. Think about it. It's the most dangerous job that you can. Think about it. It's the most dangerous job that you can have. Uh, researcher, researchers say that coworkers that hug get along better and more productive. And that may open up something with the HR department.
Yeah.
Uh, the majority of single women surveyed say they are not interested in dating a man who weighs less than they do. Not interested in dating.
Interesting.
Less than they do. Eighty percent of women know their ring size, but only twenty percent of men know it. Uh, I'm guilty of that. Over half of all college students wish their parents would not come to visit. Don't come to visit. And, uh, across the world, this is crazy to think about, two hundred and fifty ATM machines are installed every day across the world, two hundred and fifty of them. So those are your things you need to know and what it is. And here is today's impossible question, uh, for those of you, Blink. A lot of people said Blink. And that's a pretty good guess.
Yawn.
Yawn is another one. But I'm gonna say somebody did get it right. Somebody got it right. They get the special comforting music. That's not really a get it right type song, is it?
No.
This is lowering my cortisol level, okay? It's either that or your chest hair, Jason. I'd much rather listen to this.
I would much rather you listen to that, too. We might, we, 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 we might have to have some HR come to Jesus meeting or something.
All right. Ken Gobble got the answer right. It was Take Selfies. Take Selfies was the answer. Ken Gobble got the answer right. So, uh, Ken, congratulate, that was definitely not like a congratulations type song. It was kind of depressing.
That was a depressing kind of song.
I told my software to make.
That was, that was like, uh, like what you hear at the dentist or in the elevator.
I told my software, I said, make a song that sounds like Tron. Kind of did.
I don't know. I don't know Tron, so.
Pretty cool movie. Paula Springer, by the way, she, this is correct, too. Um, nurses also have a very dangerous job.
They do.
Think about it. Bridget was telling me, um, some stories of some folks that she knew that were nurses in the TDCJ prison system. And, uh, there were some, I mean, some pretty scary things that, that happened there for nurses. And, uh, yeah, she was, if, when we were thinking about coming to Huntsville, she said, man, that'd be great to work for the prison system because it's benefits and all that. And then she heard from people, she said, I don't think it would be. And I'm not knocking TDCJ. I'm just saying that there were some things that she heard that kind of eluded her away from that. I'm sure things have changed now, but it's.
Yeah, you never know.
Pretty scary to think about, so. All right, well, it's almost nine AM.
We need to make a.
We need to get on that phone call, Jason.
Yeah, come on.
And so, uh, let's get this bad boy fired. I don't even have anything fired up. Jason, while I'm doing this, what's going on at Guardian Defense? Tell us what's happening, man.
Oh, you know, we're just, uh, trying to get, get back on our feet a little bit. Well, I am anyway. But range is still open. We'll have some classes.
Being so mean today.
I didn't say nothing.
It was the look on her face. I could feel it.
Called your peg leg and now you're like, trying to get back on my feet and then I go there.
Well, I am. I'm just being honest. You know, think about this, guys. You know, hunt season is right around the corner, you know, for rifle season. So, uh, whether you want to come and cite your rifle in, we do have rifle range. If not, we, uh, offer those services as well. We will cite your gun in for you.
Lot of, uh, great things happening and all you got to do is, uh, go to our friends at Guardian Defense, online at guardiandefensellc.com for all of your.
You're gonna have to clown hard this morning.
All of your guardian needs. Do what?
You're gonna have to clown hard.
Clown?
Yeah.
Why?
On a phone call.
Oh, yeah. Let's see who we can get today.
I already know who it is.
All right, hold on. The system takes, see, the system is slow. Here we go.
She's gonna call you by name.
I'll be Pecos.
Pecos?
Pecos and Perla.
No, we are not Pecos and Perla.
Primo. Totino. The person that complains about never winning isn't gonna answer the phone.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, this is Kay Boning. Please call your name in.
Hi, you did not win this morning because you did not answer the phone.
Uh-oh.
So there you go.
She's gonna be mad.
Well, you know, it is what it is, Jason, you know? It is what it is. So, uh, all right, let's head back over. I feel like this person won recently. I think they won this week.
I don't know.
Yeah, they've already won this week. Let's head over to another one. This is another random one. Here we go. The, uh, randomizer does not tell me if someone, it, it, it doesn't wipe you off the list if you've already won.
Yeah.
All right, let's head back over.
So are you Pecos or, or what?
Yeah, I'll be Pecos.
Okay.
Come on. Wait. Oh, man, this may not work, Jason. We just had a beep here. Let's try it again.
Hello?
Hi, this is Pecos and Totina.
Good morning, Rob.
No, this is Pecos and Totina.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know Totina. I'll have to meet her.
They call her.
Totino, not Totina.
Totino.
Totino.
Last two weeks on the road, you're trying to give me a lady's name. Come on.
Totina, you know, she has, they call her Toe Tina because she only has one toe. It's Toe Tina.
Yeah.
Well, she's always got that walking boot on, so who knows?
Hey, you know, one of these days it's coming off.
One of days, that, one of these days, that walking boot's going somewhere you don't want it to go. That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, Rob.
Oh, Tara Burnett here with, are you, what are you up to right now, Tara? You doing okay?
I am doing, I am doing great. I am blessed. I just came out of an amazing meeting with all of our local nonprofits. It was wonderful.
Awesome. Well, good deal. Well, Tara Burnett is the director over at Hearts Veterans Museum, and you are the winner today. You've won a Cafe Texan gift card before. Did you get that last one I left on top of the fridge?
I sure did.
Okay. I'll have to find a new hiding spot for it now if I come over there after hours.
We'll have to meet during business hours now.
Yeah.
See, this is how you know you're, you're just in good people country. Like you can leave something on top of a fridge, you know? Where else can you do that?
That's right.
Tara, real quick question. If somebody, now it can't be like a million dollars because that's too easy, but if there was something that somebody could leave on the top of the fridge for you, what would you want it to be?
Um, really, just blessings. Just, just a handwritten note, you know, saying thank you for what you do. We're, we're praying for you. You know, we're praying, praying over your, your mission and your organizations and we're just wishing you luck. I think that would be the best thing that people could leave for us.
All right, well, well, you may want to look on top of that fridge a little bit later then. So, well, congratulations, winner today. Cafe Texan, our friends over at Cafe Texans blessed you with a gift card and, uh, we'll get that over to you today. How does that sound, Tara?
That sounds wonderful, Rob. Thank you so much.
You bet. Uh, Jason's got a quick question for you.
What are you thankful for most today?
Well, you know, after having that meeting this morning, I am thankful for all of the amazing people in ministries in our, in our, in our area that just, everybody has a different goal. Everybody has a different purpose, but we all work together to make sure that everybody's mission is done and, and completed.
Awesome.
Awesome. Love it, Tara. Hey, we love you, appreciate you, and, uh, let's get you on the show again soon to give us some updates, all right?
Yes, sir. I'll be there soon because we have the muster festival coming up September seventh.
Awesome. All right. Well, we'll get you on the calendar. Have a blessed day.
All right, y'all too. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
I have to be careful because one time after the phone call, I clicked on End Stream and it killed our show. So, uh, well, Jason, a lot of fun, man. Thanks for letting us who-roy with you a little bit. Dee, always good to have you. And Totino, not Totina. I just said.
Come on, man. That's two weeks on the road.
It just popped into my head. Well, you know my real name, don't you?
I know what you're.
What is it?
Robin.
You can call me Robina. That's all right.
Robina.
That's what my uncle, my uncle, my uncle used to call my brother Charles. He called him Carlotta and he called me Robina. Carlotta and Robina. Those, those were our nicknames.
Robina.
Jason's nickname from his uncle that lives up north is Dubin.
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 Mine was Dugan. That's what my dad, that's cool. Yeah, Dugan and Dubin.
Yep.
Dugan and Dubin, coming at you live on Tactical Tuesday.
We're gonna do that next week.
Have you ever been around folks, there, there's this one guy that I used to know that did sports and he'd put on this fake radio voice? And I had to tell him, I was like, just talk normal. You sound better normal. But, well, here we go. And he's gonna kick the ball. And I was like, calm down, chill out. We're gonna be cool. All right, Jason?
Yep.
All right, that'll wrap it up here on a Tactical Tuesday. Again, Guardian Defense for all of your personal safety needs. Beautiful firing range out there. Safety all the way through, and maybe you don't even know how to use the safety. They're gonna teach you how to use the safety.
We can.
They'll teach you from, from, uh, from the end all the way to the handle, every component about a gun that you need to know to make sure you're safe.
Rob's gonna come out and I can teach him a few things.
I think it'd be cool to come out and do like some video, you know? And I've noticed YouTube is kind of chilled out. They're allowing some of that again. Have you noticed? Like they got pretty restrictive for a while, but I've noticed some things now where they're allowing, especially a lot of teaching and training. I've seen it on YouTube again, which is good. People need to be educated. But a video's not gonna teach you. Hands-on application is what's gonna teach you. It's Jason Thompson will teach you the right way.
We will try.
So go by and see him, set up the appointment, go online to guardiandefensellc.com. Want to remind you, get your brisket dinner coming up on Thursday. Thursday, uh, that is August the fifteenth at six o'clock. Final opportunity, hellohuntsville.com or hellohuntsvilltx.com forward slash dinner. That will wrap it up here on the longest show we've ever had on this program. It's been a fun one. We just wanted to keep going this morning. And, uh, we want you all to have a blessed day. As I end every show reminding you this morning that we're not strong enough alone to make it on our own, friends. We truly aren't. We need each other. So please provide a word of encouragement, lend a hand of support. Somebody out there needs you. We'll be back at it tomorrow. Rick and Kay Boning up tomorrow's promised Montessori schools. We'll be talking more about unleash your imagination. Until next time, friends. God bless you. Have a wonderful, wonderful day, and, uh, we will see you later. Jason, we'll see you.
See you.